We're taking the boxes out, everything's going, everything's going. So I figured, and in my office, there was two drawers of documentation that I had, and they mysteriously disappeared. My drawers are empty.
Well, I-
There's a lot of form and documentation there, it's gone.
All you have, I know is what I saw with my own eyes. I saw in Attorney Mueller's office, a platform full of records that he alleged belonged to the Village University Park. And I know for a fact, before Manager Thompson left, when she came to my office, she bought one box, and I said, "Where are the rest of the records?" And she said, "Mueller said that's all he got." So that's all I can tell you about it.
Uh, on tip five, for whatever reason, why, when they were established twenty years ago, that they weren't in different accounts? You mean, all of these are under one account?
There should have been sub-accounts here right there, but those sub-accounts were never established. And so what we did is, when we looked at the tips, we looked at how much money was in tip five, and what percentage of that money each developer should have. And that doesn't mean that they have, if we gave each developer established sub-accounts, or each developer, and so all the money they're supposed to have in their account, you would have some sub-accounts with no money, basically, that's what, that's what would happen. So, sub-accounts were never established. And, uh, so, and the only people that can explain that were the people who were, who were working in, in, in finance at that time. I wanted to bring up another issue too, with regard to the tips. John is looking at tip based on what was money that was put into the tip by Will County, what was paid out, and what is in the bank. We're also reviewing, uh, the tip accounts, we're looking at the wire transfers. You have a document that says preliminary summary of wire transfer fiscal year 2012 through 2016. And if you look at that, the, at the different schedules, we, we find that twenty-two million dollars between 2012 and 2014 were transferred, and five million of it was for tip expenditures. Reading across, none tip expenditures, four point seven million, payroll transfer, one point four, and other tip wire transfers that are still researching, and it's three point three million, and then there's another seven million that they're looking at. That's part of the forensic audit.
Very good.
So, so, uh-
Very good.
So, we, so that number that John gave you, maybe more or less, and we have to complete the analysis. And we're pushing our staff very hard to make sure that we're done in a timely fashion. Our biggest hindrance is getting bank statements. And Village Manager has been working his tail off, he's on the phone with me all day, trying to hide this. He's calling all the time. Our, our staff is going through the records now, because the records that we have of yours are not in any kind of order. So we have people sitting there going through them, sorting through the records, and putting them in order, so we can make sense of what you do have.
And bank statements from which bank?
Uh, the bank statements are from a number of banks, either Midland Bank or-
Midland is new ones as well.
There, I think we included that in last month's report, and it's also included in this month's report. Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, some of the statements we were looking for were with Midland Bank, which the village started up accounts with them last summer, or a year and a half ago in 2016. And Jacilia Kelly's worked in providing us with those statements. So we, we think we're in pretty good shape with the Midland statements, we're all caught up with those. Uh, we also had the issue with Amalgamated, and as Mr. Rogers said, we were, Jacilia, myself, and Ed were on the phone with Amalgamated just the other day, and we seem to have that straightened out as well.
When I asked that question, they said it didn't happen years ago. I asked about two years ago, and they said it didn't. And I remember when they did, they said it did. But I'm glad that you discovered it and this, thank you.
Well, I think, uh-
Clarification.
I think the big issue is getting the banks off the bus to give us the records that we need, and Jacilia, I know she gets tired of me calling her too, I think she hides, just like I have, but that's, that's, that's the issue that we're having. Now, another thing, I called the Comptroller's office today and talked to them about the late tip reports. And you don't owe a million dollars for being late with tip reports. The most you could owe is a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, because it's based on twenty dollars a day per tip. And you're, I looked at the tip reports that are there, and they're there up to 2014, so fifteen, sixteen, seventeen are not there. You can't submit any tip reports now, because the comptroller doesn't have the resources online for you to do it. So what they said they're gonna do is send out a letter to all of the communities when you can begin to submit your tip reports again. They're going to, uh, there's going to be a waiver of any, any-
Of these-
Fines during that period. They're gonna get, they're gonna give you a window to get your tip reports in. Those three years of, of tip reports, I think, based on what I looked at, shouldn't be that difficult to do. And I think that you could probably, working with comptroller, get that fine greatly reduced. But it's not a million dollars, if, if, at, at, what, six tips at twenty dollars a day for three years, you're looking at about a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars about.
Okay. I know the comptroller, and they had a meeting with the mayor's comptroller, there's some new things that they're implementing as well, so I don't know if that's the reason for the automation being delayed, but they're getting ready to put something on who this felt is-
Yeah, I, I, I know. I, I, they didn't explain it to me, but I talked to the person who was in charge of that, and that was the information she gave me. The other thing that I checked on yesterday was the surpluses in your tips. The village can declare a surplus in a tip anytime they want to, during that twenty-three year period. That doesn't mean that you have to take that money and give it to the taxing bodies. You can use that money legitimately if you're doing another project within a tip. So I think it would behoove you, your finance director, whoever comes in, to become well-acquainted with that, because that, that's, that's a resource that you have for twenty-three years that's under your control, and you can pretty, you can pretty much manage that as you need to, for legitimate purposes.
Examples, really examples of those purposes, for example, we have areas of tip five that have no power, no electric, no lights, nothing. A lot of these monies that were moved and placed in the general fund, and placed in other funds, could have been used for infrastructure improvements for the industrial work, based on those issues. As far as the bank statements are concerned, the biggest challenge that we're running into is, the village has opened and changed and moved banks for several years, and the problem is, at this point of requesting bank statements, the previous finance department is no longer there, the signers on the accounts are no longer employed by the village. So they require documentation and verification by a signer on that account, and the only available signer that we have in the older accounts is Clerk Dee Jones. So she's working with me to do documentation, requesting statements. Even me, as the current village manager, I do not have the authorization to pull those statements, because I was never a signer on those accounts. So those are the difficulties, the difficulties that we're running into. Uh, when I contact the bank, we look at anything that's prior to my tenure, if there are no signers available, we have to have Clerk Dee Jones kind of contact the bank trying to initiate getting those statements, and those are, those are the biggest challenges. As far as the preliminary summary of tip wire transfers, this is fiscal year 2012 to 2016. Right now, as Ed said, we have about seven million dollars that has not been analyzed, it's currently being analyzed by the forensic accountant. As of this date, there's twenty-five million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and forty-one cents of non-tip expenditures that have been pulled out of the tip, tips, uh, one through five in total. And that number, as, as Ed can say, can rise, because we do have seven million dollars that have not, that has not been evaluated, it's currently being evaluated by the forensic auditor, requesting additional documentation. Um, as far as documentation in regards to tip reimbursements, the village historically has been very lax as far as requesting documentation from tip businesses for reimbursement requests. Some of the reimbursement requests are seen on one-page documents that are sent in by the business with a signature by the village manager only, and possibly the finance director requesting the experience of those funds. Well, when, for audit purposes, we require other documentation, such as proof of redevelopment costs, proof of training that has been done. You have businesses, such as Blue Links and other businesses, Plaid, that has done millions and millions of dollars of training, and the training reimbursement clearly states in the tip agreement, training village employees, but the village has been paying for the training of all their employees, out of the country, out of state. Instead of it going through a proper review process, the village has been just providing this money to these businesses. And at this point, the reason we have all this litigation is, the businesses, due to the historic nature of the village providing these funds, when we stop providing them, saying we have a legal reason not to provide them, they challenge us because they say, "Well, you've been giving us this money all along. Why do you stop giving us money now?"
Question, when I brought that up, is trustee asked a question about their training and their tip agreement, and I asked at that time, Horace Miles, could we do a renegotiation with the tip agreements, because I found out that, through research, that the people, according to the research of looking at who they were supposed to be training, it says in our tip agreement, that they were supposed to be employees of the village, as you so stated. However, I found out they were not employees of the village, and they were, these people were going to train in Europe, in different countries, and we weren't giving that. So I'm glad that someone else is seeing that and has understood, because the agreement was not, um, honored, shall I say.
To further clarify, also, based on the results of this audit, currently, the, as of August, since I've been the interim manager and now the village manager, we've implemented a four-step approval process now for approval of all tip expenditures. Uh, first step is finance review, second step is attorney review, signed off by the village attorney, third step is signed off by the village manager, and no tip expenditures will go out without final approval of the board. I'll be requesting that the board at a later date memorialize this in an ordinance, so it can be memorialized for future dates, so there will be a proper reviewer. And with this review process, with the attorneys, we're requesting all documentation from the businesses now. And, and this is the biggest issue, as I was stating. The businesses are not used to providing the village documentation, so when we say, "Hey, we need documentation from fifteen years ago," they provide a one-page document, because they've never provided documentation to the village. So now we're asking to substantiate the money that they received from the village in the past, and the reason they're delayed is because the document does not exist, and they know if they provide us evidence of this document not existing, that pending potential legal action, a litigation will occur. So this is why we've sent a first letter, a second letter, now a third letter demanding the documentation. The fourth letter's gonna be coming from the village attorney, and at that point, we're gonna pretty probably proceed with potential litigation on these businesses in regards to not providing the appropriate documentation for these requests. So, uh, I just want the board to rest assured that there is a learned lesson that's came, that has came from this tip review, and that my office has provided the proper checks and balances in place to prevent this from happening again, and these checks and balances will be provided for the board for memorialization into a village or codified village ordinance.
Uh, Jeff? So that the board, please, do not take this twenty-five million dollars too hard. We are still analyzing the expenditures, so we may find out that some of this money was, had legitimate, uh, they were legitimate expenditures, and these numbers may go down and be more in line with what John is finding through his, through his analysis, because we have the forensic auditor working separately, and they're looking at checks, I mean, they're looking at everything. So before they make a decision, they look at the wire transfer, they look at who it went to, if there are checks associated with it, they look to see who the check was made out to, who signed it, they're looking at everything. So, uh, give us a chance to get finished, and I assure you that if we have the documentation, we're on track to be finished and up and out of here. And with audit done by April, by April, we should be out of here.
Okay, great. Um, last question to you about the last meeting, and I want to make sure we're current, like I said, we're putting, we're gonna be in new, it's a new year, new board, new ordinance and new policies, and we're gonna be in order. Um, so that this board is serious about what they're doing, and we're gonna have another retreat to talk about even more policies and procedures for that place. So people understand, and we'll let the public know that as well. Remember when we had a meeting, which we hadn't had for a long time, Ed, and you brought it with Irma, to the taxing bodies, we had a meeting, a yearly meeting, we are supposed to do that, and I want to make sure we do it, and we do it in a correct order, because the last one was not that good. The village manager will do it well, because we have to have that yearly report to all taxing bodies, and give them an understanding. Last time, you were very agreeable and, and sympathetic with us, but I'm glad that you did that, I want that to continue, so we'll be on point with that with Will County and with the state.
Yeah, well, that's the only way you can really find out what's going on, is to go through the source.
Right, so we'll be doing that. Am I correct, you'll be prepared to do that again, to our taxing bodies to make those reports? Sure. Very good, okay. Thank you. On, yes, sir?
Yeah, on this issue of the missing documents from Attorney Mueller, I remember him saying, or presenting to the board, at least we're counting the board, that he had over two-hundred-and-fifty boxes of stuff. So if he only provided one box, I think our attorneys would be involved in getting the rest of those documents.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what to say. I, I know what I saw with my own eyes. Irma was there, Jacilia was there, and I think they were trying to intimidate us, and that attorney, what was that, that retired judge, the one I asked what he was doing? There was a judge there, retired judge, and he told me he was reading the tip law, the tip law, and, uh, they brought out just a huge cart full of boxes, and I looked and I said, "Wow." And they, I think they, they were trying to scare us away with those, with those boxes, but he said he had another whole office full, so that maybe you can count for you fifty, but I got one.
Well, I, I did make a statement when it was told to the board that I'm taking all these boxes, so I said, "We shouldn't take anything off-site," but, you know, that was at that time, and we will record new year.
Okay, any others? Thank you very much for that, and we'll keep that right now to get the finalization of it.
Okay. You need us to stay?
That's all. Do you have any other, any other questions?
Thank you, you're doing a great job, we really, really appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Outstanding. Okay, um, at this time, we'll go for the business. As you know, this is a business of being a whole discussion, by a one discussion of public comment policy. And thank you trustee Milton Payton for bringing that out, that we had already had this in place, and may it just say, April?
Yeah, April eleventh, two thousand seventeen.
April eleventh, two thousand seventeen. So I don't know if you just, you guys have already done that? And let me speak to the, um, CBK, House nine E, that I am one vote and one voice. The same dictatorship is not kind, and I forgive you and all of you that speak ill-will in this board and myself, if I could care less, we're gonna do what we have to do. But until you really know the facts, please, let's not do that this year. We have time at our door to ask you to come for meetings. So I would like to say, on this one, the policy, if we have it in place already, as far as agreements, um, do we need to, attorney, do we need to discuss that?
Um, Mayor, I'd ask you to be recognized.
Just a second, I have a question for the head of the court, to the attorney, so that he will be right back. No problem.
Yeah, Mayor, trustee Payton did provide me today with a policy tweet that was passed in April of twenty seventeen. I'll have to review that, as compared to what was proposed. It looks like the prior policy on public comment did move, did limit remarks of people addressing the board of three minutes, also limited board members to three minutes on time with the comments. There's other information in this policy, this not proposed policy concerning the limit on total time for public comment to thirty minutes. I'll have to look at these other provisions to see if they mirror each other, if there's what the differences are between this April twenty seventeen.
Okay. Well, you said, Mayor, I did have an opportunity to actually compare the, the proposed ordinance that we have for discussion and the one that we passed in, I believe we said April. Uh, they are, they are pretty much the same, there is a thirty-minute time limit. And the one that we passed in April, there is a three minutes per person, just like the one that we proposed in April, there is, and there's a slight opposite, it talks about irrelevant abusive remarks in this current version, however, in the version that was passed again in April, that talks about, that people treating the board with candor and respect. So I'm gonna say, it's the exact same ordinance. And my question now, because I, I mustn't know the answer to this question, who prepared this, how much time did they spend on it, and how much did it cost? Because, uh, since we are in a new year, and we want to watch our revenues and the cost of things, who prepared this, how much did it cost?
Who prepared this?
The proposed public comment policy that is on discussion the agenda for today in this new year. Who, who-
Our, our office prepared the ordinance and the-
How many hours, how many hours did it spend?
I don't, I, I would have to go back and look, but I don't think it was an over hour, if it was an hour.
Thank you. How much did it take now?
Twenty-seven-five dollars?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir?
Yeah. First, I think the, the information was sent to him by, by Clerk Dee Jones.
Thank you.
The, the, um, uh, one that was passed previously is a little bit more comprehensive, so if I had my brothers, my recommendation after the board, because I know, I just sent that to you, you guys, this afternoon, so if I had my brothers, I would like to, you know, start, use the previous one as a basis, because I would like also to have that even modify a little bit on timing the total time for the comments, as well as the public speaking and the public body response, you know, to three minutes. So I would like to see that in there, that somebody be designated to do that each meeting, because part of the reasons why our meetings have gone so wrong is that we have exceeded those guidelines, and we need to, if we're gonna break some order, then we need to make sure that it's in fact enforced.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor, the, the one thing I would note in reference to the policy that was passed in April concerning the limit of thirty minutes duration for the entire amount of public comments, an issue could be raised in reference to the open meetings, and let's say you have eleven people that show up to talk, and they're allowed three minutes each, that would put you at thirty-three minutes, or some number in excess thereof. And if you were to cut it off to thirty minutes, there could be an issue concerning open meetings, because you're not allowing another person to speak, that's one item to note, in reference to that previously passed policy.
And also, I noticed, at the school board, they do, and we will do that, put that part and adopt that to amendments, that if you, we do not address that as far as open meetings act, that we can, you can submit them online, and we can respond back to you online. So those are some of the changes and things that we were looking at and talking about. And also, our clerk is a keeper of the records as well. So we put the agenda together. When I ask a question, "Do we have this in place?", and we say no or yes, then she would normally let us know, there is one or there isn't one, or whatever, to cut the time off for our attorneys. But that's what, we have the meetings on Wednesdays, and we talk about the agenda. We talk about the agenda and make the agenda. And if any other trustees, I put it out there, if they like to put anything in the agenda, which some of them have, such as trustee Williams, such as the current, and today we have something from trustee Oscar Brown, from trustee McCallum, they have added to the agenda. So the agenda is made up of this board, just to let you know that as well, to put that out there, make it very clear. Yes, we do the agenda, and if there's any questions and concerns, yes, make that, like, trustee, um, oh goodness, trustee Payton has helped us on that, and he brings things to our attention. So it's a conglomerate of all of us, so that, you know, we work together as a whole. So we will be, what are we going to do on this, and we still want things to be added to it?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, I would just like to just comment on the attorneys. We had this discussion with previous attorneys, and maybe it needs to be researched a little more to say that thirty minutes, you know, to limit the total public comments, and they said that was okay, you just had to have some guidelines, you know, for that. And the, the version that we had, we passed before, as the mayor indicated, provides that if they cannot, and we cut off the discussion at thirty minutes, they can submit to the, to the mayor what their issue is, and, you know, what their comments were, and then the manager, or the mayor, whoever, can respond, you know, back to them, you know, electronically. Or it can be continued, as is the practice now for the next meeting, you know. So we just need to make sure that we're good from a, from a legal standpoint, but we need to make sure that we maintain the board meeting process in an orderly fashion, so it doesn't take four hours for a board meeting.
Exactly.
Because most other communities are done in about thirty minutes.
Yes, they are. So, yes, Mr. Strong?
Happy to be here, uh, here with the board, so and so forth. In reference to a request going online to whatever individual that question is asked of, at any point, perhaps at the next board meeting, would that request online be spoken of at a meeting, so all will know as far as the response? Or is that possible?
Yes, sir.
So I helped design the school board's policy, you know, it was, again, it was like here, it was a conglomeration of what the board wanted. So, but the process that we don't have, that I thought, you know, our last manager would do, and, you know, I'd be happy to work with, with manager Payton, is that when you want to speak, you have to fill out a form, which would include your phone number, your email address, if you don't have one, and your address. So that if you don't have a chance to verbally express your opinions, then it will be researched if necessary, and a response can be provided back to you electronically or by mail. Okay? So that, that was the purpose of the form. So, I mean, we could follow a similar kind of, you know, protocol if we want, and then with a new website, if necessary, maybe there is a section where for a board meeting, these weren't asked, and then this, this was the question or the issue, and this is the response, and we can, you know, make sure that everybody has their, their day in court, so to speak.
Yes, that has been added to the new website, the request.
That'll be too, Mayor, maybe we can scale it down to, maybe we can scale it down to two minutes, I think, response to two minutes would be able to accommodate.
Okay, so we're going to go back to that attorney to all modifications, inputs, please submit them to him so we can have that ready for the next agenda for a meeting. Is there a motion to put that on the next agenda? I mean, a motion, is there a decision? Listen, I mean, is that something that you would like to see on next agenda?
Yeah, mayor, I would, again, I would like to see us start with the old one, add the things that have been mentioned here after, you know, the attorney has had a chance to review it to make sure we're according to oil here. And then it'd be sent out to the board ahead of time so they have a chance to review it and make any tweaks if necessary. But, you know, I would support it being on the agenda for passage.
Okay.
Or, you know, passage in terms of it being revised because what we have now is in effect.
Anybody else? Okay, this is next issue, uh, five A2, a discussion policy, which I thank God for this. I've been trying to do this for a long time. A policy for reimbursable for travel, meals, and lodging expenses since majority of the board, which I opted out, uh, has a training fee now. Just to use when you're glad to see this. So a training fee for... We have a policy now. We would like to... I have for a policy to put in place for reimbursable for travel, meals, and lodging expenses so that everyone, at any time, will be transparent, we're trying to be open, honest with people, that there's a form that they can fill out. And in here, it talks about exactly what you would do, what the form includes, it's inclusive of expenses here for travel, the name of the official, of the employee, the position, uh, date, activity, the event, time, purpose of the expense, uh, the mileage, meals, parking, lodging, automobile, airfare, and the whole, and bus fare, taxi, shuttles. And this would be a part of the package that they will receive once they start traveling. They will complete these, they'll be finished and put on file. So any... And that goes for everybody, not just the board. We're gonna do this for anyone that's traveling, any staff. Then we'll have process. We're just trying to put processes and procedures in place, which was not there, and we don't want anyone to think anyone's being abusive. So anytime anyone travels, except I don't have to fill it out because I pay for my own, but I still will submit where I fill out what I give, but I'll be paying out of my own. So, um, this is something that the board has agreed with me to put on the agenda for so we can show what our travel expenses for. Is there any other discussions about this?